And that means we are going to call to order the January 18th, 2022 meeting of the Westford School Committee. And we shall start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. I guess first I'll open up to a motion.
A motion to approve consent agenda as outlined on tonight's meeting agenda.
Second.
So Valerie with the motion, Alicia with the second. Any questions or comments? Gloria.
I have one question. The memo regarding the wage change mentioned that select board would be voting on January 11th. Did they take that vote?
I thought they did.
They did.
They did. I don't think I watched that part of the meeting, but yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just wanted to double check.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
I have another question, Chris. Pat, were these, these numbers were factored into the budget that we saw last week?
No.
No. Okay.
So the substitute service workers are now part of the government budget. Subsidiary is an extremely low occurring number because there's a little less of these custodians, but the PAs, that's it.
Okay. So I guess my next question is, is should we, is there, I guess, cause for concern at all, or are these, these are, this isn't a huge lion's share of our budget or anything, but it's still an additional cost, right?
Dr. Chu, did you want to talk about that PAs and their salaries? Have you on it?
I mean, we are looking at it, and we're still also looking to see what our final number is.
Okay.
Right? So I feel like that plays into it. It's, the minimum wage has shifted, so we're looking to incorporate this.
Yeah.
But we have, part of it is looking to see, once we get that information, and I'll have more when we have the budget discussion about just even that timeline.
Okay.
So I don't feel like I can give, I can't give you a specific answer right now.
Perfect.
Did you have something, Valerie? That you were going to ask?
Yes. Sorry, just because the warrant paper isn't in the packet, I just wanted to make sure to read those numbers out loud for the record.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
So payroll warrant 2230 SP in the amount of $2,085,946.44 dated January 20th, 2022, and expense warrant number 2230 SE in the amount of $893,984.62 dated January 20th, 2022.
Okay, no other comments or questions? I will call for the vote, all in favor of the consent agenda. Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you. Let's go on to public comment. I don't think we have anyone here for public comment, but if anyone on Zoom would like to make public comment, raise your hand in Zoom, and we will bring you in for that. We'll give you a minute to do so. If you're watching on YouTube and you wanted to make public comment, there's like a 20-second delay, so we'll wait at least 20 seconds, because you'll then need to run over to Zoom to do that. Are we projecting?
Is there any music, like the Jeopardy music?
Yeah.
Like that one.
While we're waiting, giving people another minute, I'm just going to put full screen, that's so that when we present. Okay, I don't see any hands in Zoom, so we will close out of that, and we'll go on to informational updates, starting with the superintendent update.
Would you hand those over to Lauren Shawn, if you could take these?
Thank you. This is exciting.
All right, you'll see that
Very exciting.
We have the names, our winning names, if you saw it in the town, in the town manager's newsletter that she had shared. I wanted to celebrate these names. So you'll see, so we had, well, how many different trucks?
Oh, so good. Wow.
Well, 14. So there's 14 trucks here.
I don't know. Plowasaurus.
So you'll see that the Abbott School, they're selected, so I'll just, I'll let everybody know before I say them out loud for the, for the public as well, too, just that they understand what happened. So we, Steve Cronin, Department of Public Works, had seen this really wonderful idea and brought it to both the town manager and me to see what we thought about having students name the different plow trucks that we have in town. And so there were 14 different trucks that he identified that we could put a name on, and so they developed this contest, and then we divided those trucks amongst the schools, right? So each school took a certain number of trucks at the pre-K to five level, and then they conducted their own contests, right? So they, each school did it a little bit differently, but then they, they decided upon their winners, and here are the winners that they had, and so the, the number of the truck, it had a picture that was, that was presented to the students. I mean, I will say, a lot of them looked very, very similar in terms of, you know, just the different trucks, and so the different ways that the kids came up with, I think unique names are fantastic. So Abbott School will name one of them Plowasaurus, then Abbott has another one, it's Fireball. Christopher Fully, they named three of the trucks, Winter Dragon, Snow Monster, Darth Plow. Day School, a lot of people were really jealous of the Day School entries when the other principals saw the entries.
Yeah.
Snowy One Kenobi, and Jennifer Snowpads. Very cute. The Miller School also
Jennifer Snowpads come plow.
And so the Miller School named three trucks, Mr. Dump's Power Plower and Snowy Big Plow. And then Abnasset named two of the trucks, Godzilla and Mr. Scoop. And then Robinson School, Snow Day Spirit and Blazing Star.
Wow.
So I hope that the students had a lot of fun doing this.
Yeah.
And so now, now what they're, what they're going to do is that the Department of Public Works is figuring out how they might create signs for the trucks, and then they know, you know, which school named each one, so hopefully, as we go through the winter season, the students will be able to see different trucks that they named going through town. I think it's a great idea. So we're, we're going to look to see whether it's something that we can repeat every couple of years, or we just have to look at the logistics of renaming the trucks, and so if it's, if it's something that we can do, we'll do that. So I thought those were a lot of fun.
Yeah.
Right? So, and then I had a question this week about the ARPA funds that were designated, that the select board approved, the $2,000 to provide some training for our principal aides, and that is set up for February. Two of our staff members, Melissa Warner and Abby Vier, are both safety care trainers, and they're going to be providing virtual training for the PAs. The PAs will have two different options as to when they can attend the virtual training, but it'll be something that'll be for them to be able to do. So that is going to be communicated to them shortly, but that's been organized. Those are our updates. Did you have anything in addition to that that I'm thinking? Thank you.
Great. Thank you for that. School committee updates. Alicia?
So I just wanted to let everyone know that it's, because it's a little bit out of the schedule, that the Policy Subcommittee will actually be meeting with some members of the, I want to get it right, hold on one second, the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee. They approached the Policy Subcommittee and wanted to talk about some places where we might be able to adjust our policies, or perhaps create new policies together along the, their mission statement of clean energy and sustainability. So because it's out of the normal meeting, I just wanted to let everyone know that we are going to be meeting with them this Friday morning. It's a posted meeting, and we'll let you guys know what comes of it, but just wanted to put it out there.
That's great. Thank you.
Just giving an update on the Robinson Playground Committee that's working away in the background. Paul Fox is heading that up. The update so far is that they have kind of decided finally on which location of that playground area and what way to place the new updated playground going in, and so they decided they would put a fence there instead of swings, because they didn't want kids catapulting off into all directions, which was awesome. And so the next step is they're kind of now beginning to focus more on what exact, what exact equipment then can fit in that specific location. So the staff at Robinson have already seen a few different examples. They've decided to go the more traditional route in terms of luck, the space-agey stuff. Some of the teachers were concerned of getting kiddos stuck in there and having to go into very tight spaces. So I get that, having been a parent. And they will have further talks then as this progresses. There is kind of a middle section now between the playground and the tennis courts of what we might be able to do with that spot. Somebody did suggest picnic benches, because it might be nice if families are using it after school hours, that they can bring snacks and stuff. That is probably not in the budget. However, Paul Fox did say that he might even volunteer for a fundraiser dump tank, so, if needed. But yes, it's moving along, and it's a very nice project to be involved in. It's a very fun one.
That's great. Thank you.
I was just going to add that in our budget discussions, we have made reference to the Finance Subcommittee, and just an alert, I guess, that we do continue meeting, and we are publicly posted group, and the agendas are just where all the other town agendas are. That's all.
Any other updates? Okay. And we don't have our student reps today, and we did get an email that they didn't have much in the way of updates, so we look forward to hearing from them on the 31st. And with that, our first item under business, it's our 7:30 item, we're a little early for that, but I think our, our presenters are here, and this is our student presenters on celebrating Diwali. Yeah, I'm sorry, come, you come up here to the mic. Thanks for coming out tonight. You guys can introduce yourselves if you want. I can put your presentation up right now if you're ready for it.
Yep.
Okay, let me get that ready while you introduce yourselves.
So I'm Natalie Strauss. I'm a sophomore at Westford Academy.
I'm Spathi Tarkamala, and I'm a junior at Westford Academy.
And I'm Mr. Antonelli, just supporting our
Okay, are we up?
Yes.
All right, there we go.
Thank you.
So you just tell me when you want me to go to the next slide. Otherwise, the floor and the mic are yours.
Perfect, thank you. So today, we're here to talk about how Westford Academy and Westford in general can better celebrate Diwali as a whole to make some members of our community feel more included.
Should I go?
Yeah. Okay, so for brief history, like most other religions, it runs on the lunar calendar, and it is a Hindu holiday, and it lasts five days and celebrates the victory of dark over light. But more importantly, I think it's more of a cultural celebration, because I know, I have friends that are Christian and Indian, and they celebrate Diwali. I have friends that are Muslim and Indian, and they celebrate Diwali. So more over time, it became a cultural holiday, and it's about seeing family, it's about seeing friends, and the third day is the most important day.
So some percentage data, a large chunk of Westford Academy alone is made up of groups of students who celebrate Diwali, so that includes, as Spathi listed, some Christians, Jains, Hindus. So about 25% of the student body is made of ethnically Asian minorities who commonly celebrate Diwali, and so we are the ninth largest state to have such a big population of students and people in general who celebrate this particular holiday.
So for our solution, I think if we took a day off, a winter break, which is in February, or we could do April break, just for the third day, just one day, because the other, the other, it's, it's five days long, and the first two days and the last two days are more of like preparation and cleanup, so there isn't as much, like of a big celebration. So on the third day, like you would start, you would wake up early in the morning, you would cook for the entire day with your parents, you would help people, like people would come over, and you spend time with family, and over this pandemic, I think it was, it's really important to have those connections, like come back together. So I usually celebrate with my uncle who lives near here in Littleton, so they come over, and we have a larger, like, celebration. So for exemptions of homework and tests and stuff, I know our schools do do that. We have exemptions from tests and quizzes and homework, but I think I personally had like two tests on Diwali, and I had a presentation the day after. So it's a little bit tough to, I do feel comfortable telling my teachers to push it off, but to have, usually the term ends right about Diwali, and it's a little bit hard to keep pushing it off like that, and with so many deadlines due, and so many kids that are missing or taking exemptions because of Diwali, I think it's a little bit hard to push it off. So excused absences don't exactly, like, work as well as I think they should theoretically.
I know a lot of my friends, they do have, we do have that option of pushing back dates and exemptions from homework, but it just, it builds up, and that creates more anxiety for the student than is really necessary, and our main goal is just to move that one day from either February or April break to cover the third day of Diwali. And we know that for the next couple of years, Diwali won't fall on the end of term one.
Actually, can I go back and ask, like, how much variation, I'm trying to think in, like, a lunar calendar, how much variation you can get in a day? I'm guessing about almost a month, right, of leeway?
Yeah, I know this year, it wasn't as close to the end of the quarter, but I know two years ago, I think Diwali was like on a Saturday, and the term ended on a Monday. So the day after immediately, I remember I was going to my uncle's house, and I had to write an essay, like, while I was there, instead of celebrating with the rest of my family. So it does, it varies a lot, but yeah, it does end relatively close.
So again, teacher behavior and how we can respectfully observe this holiday, even if we don't celebrate it, it's very important to have exemptions, of course, like we said, from tests and quizzes. So we still, like, keep, that is a priority, and we think that's something good that the school has implemented. But it's hard for some students to literally come up to their teacher and ask for that, and it's hard to ask for something when, I know, I celebrate Christmas, and I never have to ask around that time of year, like, oh, please move my test or quiz, because we have a big break for that. And it's really important for other students who do celebrate other holidays, like Diwali, that homework and tests and quizzes, teachers have calendars, the lunar calendar is provided every year, and so there is a possibility, teachers can look ahead, and schools, all of us can look ahead together and see when Diwali falls and how we can schedule around that. I just think we can do it for Christmas and other holidays, it's not impossible to do for Diwali as well. So that is kind of something we are thinking of. So these are some quotes from students about their feelings on how they don't really feel included or accepted, and it's really hurtful to see students now. We, this year at WA, we did try to do, I mean, Mr. Antonelli did a great job of fitting in as much respect for the holiday as possible, but students still felt like there was more to be done. So that's really why we're here today, in general. But students feel a lot of bitterness, it creates kind of a divide with one another, that like, oh, your holiday gets to be celebrated, what happened to mine and my culture? And so it's really important that students, you know, get that break for Diwali, and so...
I know, as an overall, like, for the continent of India, there's so many variations of religion, but I know Diwali, or Deepavali, if you're from the south, it's, it's the one holiday, I think, that all of India culturally celebrates on the same day, and I think it's, I think it's important that we get a day off for Diwali, on the third day.
Yeah.
These are more quotes.
Yeah, more quotes, you could just scroll through them, however fast or slowly you'd like, but yeah, at this time, we can take any questions if you'd like.
Well, I just want to, oh, more quotes. I don't want to go too fast, I do want to give people, especially at home, a chance to see these. And while we're doing that, just thank you for coming out and helping further our education. I think it's been three or four years since we did the revamp of the calendar and religious observance policies, and it's really important that we revisit what we did with those and hear from families and students about the impact of the policies, and, and so I, I find it really valuable to have you two come and speak to us. And for example, I think, and you talked about education, just letting, like, people don't necessarily know what it's like, so it really meant a lot to me to hear about how it's observed, and I didn't know that there, you know, that there was one day that in particular was, was kind of the big, the big one, the third day. So again, that's all really helpful for us, I think, as we, as we think about our calendars and we think about our students and their, and their cultures and traditions, that we want to make sure we're honoring and respecting. So a lot of gratitude to you both for coming out, and I guess I would ask if there are any questions when we can. Ming Chen?
I think, thank you guys for coming over, because you guys raise a really great point. It has been actually talked about in various communities for the last, like, I don't know, many years, because, for example, students, they could actually take the day off, but the school is still in session, so you still have to make up all those things, and then you come back, and then you have to actually catch up with all those work. Like Chinese New Year is just around the corner, like, in a, in a couple weeks, and then we have, like, other, like, cultural, religious holidays as well. So Diwali is definitely one of, one of the examples of this kind of holidays. So I really encourage, like, the other recruiters, when we actually look into the calendar, to actually think a way to actually, because if school is, is in session, it's very hard for students to, to, to actually take that, that holiday. It's going to be really hard. I think this is what, what the students are asking for. So I do understand we have 180 days of school days, we have to cover, understand law, but maybe find some way to actually, to like, for certain, for, for certain, like, holidays, we like, there are many, many holidays, probably pick one for each, like, group, instead, right? So trying to figure out, like, a way to allow the kids to celebrate, or allow the family to celebrate.
Alicia?
So you mentioned the, the Religious Expression Policy, which, right off the bat, that's already been flagged by the DEI, and Policy Subcommittee is reviewing it now as well, because first and foremost, it's our Religious Expression Policy, and it really should be our Religious and Cultural Expression Policy, because you are very correct in that not all of these holidays are celebrated as a religious holiday by our students, but like with the case of Lunar New Year and with Diwali, there's a cultural aspect that even if you do give an excused absence, the student then has to make it up later. And this is something that students have been telling us for a couple of years now. So I just wanted to let everyone know that the Policy Subcommittee is looking at that policy, and DEI itself has talked about how we push out notifications to teachers and to staff about how we observe things, because there is sometimes a confusion about that, sundown observance versus the day of observance, and what is required of families and things like that. So that is something that has been flagged for us a few times over the years, and we are looking at, but I did want to let everyone know that we are currently looking at the Religious Expression Policy to update it, so it's a little bit more, a little bit more user-friendly and a little bit more equitable across the board for how students and their families are observing these holidays. You know, because, like, like you've said, and it's not always about the day itself, sometimes it's about the preparation, sometimes it's about the days after, and to ask a student to make up what their peers are not having to make up seems fairly inequitable, so...
Any other comments or questions?
First, I would just like to commend the both of you for your preparation and your comfort level coming forward, making this type of request to a committee. I think a lot of students, although we'd love for them to come, I think naturally they, they would feel less comfortable, so good for you. And in terms of your persuasive speech, you had your facts straight, you tapped into emotions by sharing other students' experiences, and you came with solutions, so you had all the components there, and I'm very impressed with that presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As far
I was just going to say, I was also going to thank you for coming. I think it's interesting that you came and you have a very specific solution as well, too. The interesting thing is that that also doesn't have to be the solution, right? Because you're asking for a day, and we do control, you vote on and control the calendar, and so it, it also could just be extending the year by one day as well, too. You know what I mean? So like, that's, it, the idea of considering it and looking at the impact and looking at different opportunities for us to think how we've managed the school year, I think in the past, people have been really cognizant and trying to end the school year at a very specific time, right? But, but we actually have that flexibility to set that. We do have the mandates of 180 days, but, so I kind of wanted to say, I was really impressed that you have this, a potential solution to use a day off that we already have and maybe move it around, but I'd also just say that, that doesn't necessarily have to be the solution either, you know? But it's something that we'll definitely seriously consider and look at as we, I think, bring together our Calendar Committee to look and see what, what next year looks like.
And that's what I was going to say, the Calendar Committee will be taking a look at next year's calendar in the next, in the coming weeks, month or so, and so I don't know what the best way, I mean, you obviously have this presentation and this information that you can share with the Calendar Committee, so they can factor that in.
Well, and I think to Alicia's point, too, like, this, this has been conversations that the DEI team has been having as well, too, right? Just even, even, first of all, the physical creation of the calendar, right? And so there were, there were actually conversations about having two different resources, right? Because there was so much information that was showing up on one calendar that sometimes it was, that in itself was seeming like it wasn't a helpful resource anymore, like it was, it actually could create some confusion, so looking to see if, looking at the opportunity of having like an interactive calendar that might be able to provide some resources without, you know, needing to print a third or fourth page of a, of a calendar necessarily. So I feel like those are, the aspects of how we communicate the calendar, the aspects of why certain things are decided, and just the overall decisions that go into it are something that we're, that we're talking about right now, and this, I think this will be helpful information.
Actually, could you share this with the DEI team? We're, I think we're meeting this week, so...
Yes.
Thank you.
Any final thoughts or questions from?
I just want to say thank you for giving them the opportunity to come here, very articulate, they put together a nice presentation, thank you for recognizing, it's not always easy to be up in front of a group of adults on TV to present like this, but they did a super job tonight in representing one another, their peers at Westford Academy is commendable, so great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you know, you knew you were on TV, right?
I was going to say, I was going to say, wait, they might not have known that.
Huge viewership audience. I just wanted to know.
You're officially YouTubers now.
Yeah, that's right. Well, there's more watching, because you guys are here.
Probably.
I just
It's going to be repeated 20 times.
But do you want any final thoughts or questions?
Oh, no. We're just, we're just happy to be able to be here because I know that, you know, previous teachers have had, have said like, oh, wow, I, we tried this like a few years back. I really hope that like, and it's wonderful to know that there are already thoughts on this process. So it'll be really good to go back to school and tell my friends like, yeah, people are thinking about it. So hopefully things will get done and they'll be very happy to hear about that.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing. Thank you so much for the opportunity. And also I'm happy to know that there's already like thinking that's going into this.
But that said, it helps, like every little bit helps. So you coming out makes a huge difference, you know? So never, like always, if you see an opportunity like that, take it because you never know.
Well, and, and you had a, you had a very specific question and request as well, right? Which I think is also a little different. There have been people who've been having conversations about the calendar in general and talking about different things, but I think for you to actually say, this is, this is what we think would be helpful and this is a, this is a, a specific request is really helpful for us.
And the, the practical feedback for how like we can write a policy that gives you the option to delay a test or to delay homework, but the practical feedback of how that actually works for you and how that functions is really important for us as the body that writes those policies. We need that feedback to hear how it's working or not working and then how, how do we adjust it to make it actually have a better impact for your lives? So thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night. And as we always tell people, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but you are also welcome not to not stay.
We are not offended at all.
You can catch us on YouTube later.
That's right.
And randomly on public access when you never expect it and you flip eye and you're like, ah, people.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next agenda item is we're going to hear from leadership from the Westford Education Association. It's going to be an informational update. So I'm going to go to Zoom and bring in Christine Jusom and Heidi Hyder. Oh, wrong person. Sorry, Melissa. Sorry. You know what happens is you bring one person in and the list shifts, but there's like a lag. All right. We're one for two. And so you click on one person, but it becomes somebody else. Or Melissa was like, what? That looks, that looks more right.
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
Thanks for being here. All right. And you can hear us, right?
Heidi's here as well. Thank you for making this easy. I had to deal with some COVID, positive COVID. And last week when we set this up, I thought I'll just stay at home and keep everyone safe. But we're all good now in my household. So thank you for allowing, thank you, Chris, and the rest of the school committee members for giving us time. I know your agendas are quite lengthy each month. So the purpose of Heidi and I speaking tonight, one is to introduce ourselves and two, it's to just give you an update on where we are as an education association and to let school committee know what we're seeing in the classrooms. We know the budget is upon us and big decisions are going to be made. And we just, as an association, wanted to inform the school committee and the public where we're at and the direction we think we should go in. So for those of you who did not hear, Chris, my name is Christine Jusom. I teach fourth grade at the day school. I am in my 22nd year in the same school, same grade, so I really enjoy that age. And Heidi, she will introduce herself in a minute. She is a school counselor at Westford Academy. And we wanted to start off first was just fill people in, COVID has dramatically impacted how we organize our negotiation. So our association is comprised of over 500 staff members and they're categorized based upon their job description. So Heidi and some school committee members met tonight for their third meeting for our teacher assistants. So they're our Unit E. And we've talked a lot about how that term teacher assistants maybe doesn't capture truly what their job is. They're, they're, they don't actually assist the teacher. They assist the students. So any student that is on an individualized education plan, it's the teacher assistants and our special educators who meet their, the IEPs, the, the legal document, okay? And my son is also a student in the Westford Public School Systems. He is on an IEP. So not only do I know how demanding the teacher assistance job is on a, on a colleague level, but I also know the emails that we receive, you know, the back and forth conversations and how important the relationships are among our teacher assistants and the students. Because our students that are on IEPs, they face the biggest challenges. So right now, they are in negotiations. Right now, our main goal is, is really just to allow them to make a living wage. Their salary scale, they, they're putting in full, full day of work. Their salary is, ranges from a little below 16,000 and maxes out around 24,500. So I know I could not pay all my bills if that was my salary. So Heidi's goal and all of the teacher assistants that are taking part in negotiations, they are hoping on making some headway with that. But the other reasons Heidi and I wanted to meet tonight is to let school committee know before they vote next month on the town's budget, what we're seeing in the classroom. And it's no surprise that over the past handful of years, our enrollment has been decreasing. But what we as a Westford teaching staff want school committee and the public to know is please do not just look at the numbers. Because even before COVID hit, we were seeing an increase in the number of students who are experiencing or receiving an anxiety diagnoses. One in 44 children, students are autistic. 5% of our students in front of us have the diagnosis of ADHD. So what I'm trying to relay is numbers do not speak to the need of the students. And now you take that before COVID and now you have COVID. And so students were sent home on March 12th. And so they missed out on that learning time. And then last year, obviously, we as a town did the very best we could, but to say students didn't miss out on anything, Westford's not alone. Every student missed out on something. So we, in Westford, we focused on priority standards because we knew if our time wasn't the same, we needed to just focus in on the most important skills that the students needed to learn that year. So that being said, we sent out a survey to all of our staff and we want to know, what are you seeing with the students that are in your classrooms? And so what Heidi and I did, we broke down teacher observations in an elementary category and then a middle school and Westford Academy category. So let me read off the elementary observations from all of the staff. So we are seeing social skills have taken a hit, okay? It was very clear to us that students were not allowed to create and maintain their friendships. They weren't allowed to attend after school programs, weekend programs, and we can see that in their social skills ability, their executive functioning. So for those of you not in education, executive functioning is a student's ability to organize and plan their day. Reading and math, we, we see an area of, you know, there's obviously a little dip with some of our students as far as their reading skills or their math skills or their writing skills. It's no surprise then that students are not as independent. So teachers are like, well, the students I have in front of me, I, I'm usually not seeing this level of need as far as independence go. And it's no surprise either that students across the board, any grade level, they forgot school norms. So I'll use my class as an example. And, and today, it's, it's January and you would hope that all of these routines are routine at this point, but I still have students who start to walk out of the classroom and I have to say, um, excuse me, where are you going? And they look at me like, I'm, I'm using the bathroom. Okay, great, but I need to know your whereabouts. So we're still, for our younger kids, and I'm hoping it's better in middle school and high school, they are still getting used to school norms. Their stamina for their classwork, we've noticed that we have, we've had to give little breaks, whether it be a mask break or just a, a break from what they're doing. Their stamina has reduced a little. And to piggyback that, sustaining their attention and emotional maturity. And so none of these should come as a surprise, but we thought it was important for school committee and for parents to hear this. I, I know, you know, many of the teachers, we have shared these comments at parent teacher conferences, but we also wanted to reiterate what we were seeing in the elementary grades. So I'll turn it over to Heidi.
Thank you so much. I'm Heidi Hyder. I'm a school counselor at Westford Academy, like Christine said. I am in my 16th year at WA and I've been a school council for 21 years. And I'm proud to be the vice president of the WA this year. We decided to break down the challenges that we're seeing, you know, with elementary and secondary because it can look different. So what we're seeing in the middle schools and at Westford Academy changes, challenges that have been noted regarding quite a few things. So I'll, I'll just go through the list. Abstract thinking, writing skills. I've had several conversations with history and English teachers. Even upper class students who normally as freshmen would have a lot of direct instruction related to this, we're really having to start over with those older classes. So that's really been a, a lot of work in that area needed. Mental health, I've seen this in my office tremendously, both pre and post COVID. Those numbers of just number of students experiencing mental health concerns is, has risen every year. Lab activities are taking longer. Lengths of time to adapt to routines and expectations, we've seen an increase in that, both related to labs, but also just classroom expectations in general. Teachers have been seeing an increase in the number of students requiring extra assistance using lab equipment and other, you know, school equipment. Lower confidence in academic abilities. This has been noted by multiple teachers. Some students appear to be quieter or more reserved in class. I don't know if that's from, you know, so much time of students being on Google meets and not being able to have as many of those authentic conversations, but teachers have noted that. Lower stamina is, is another concern, as noted in the elementary schools. The number of students asking for extensions on assignments than in previous years has definitely gone up. And I do want to be clear, not related to cultural or religious holidays. That's a totally separate situation and I really enjoyed hearing that presentation. I, I thought it was wonderful. But aside from those types of extensions, which are in the handbook and, you know, perfectly appropriate, teachers at the secondary level have seen a pretty large increase in just the number of students reaching out, self advocating and just saying, you know, things are going on, I, I'm not ready for this test, I can't finish this paper or project, can I please have more time? We've definitely seen an increase in, you know, the challenge of students being able to manage mental health concerns while balancing and attending to their academics. We have also seen an increase in students struggling with completing homework routines outside of school. We've seen an increase of students having trouble maintaining the pace of a class. We have also had an increase of students feeling or being behind in math, struggling with those foundational skills they need for their current coursework. We have seen some increase in behavior issues. We have seen some struggles with lack of self advocacy skills. And I would say one of the big pieces that we're seeing much more often is just the increase in stress levels of students. So because of all of these challenges at all levels throughout the district, the WEA is requesting that no positions be cut from any of our existing programs. We really feel strongly that we need to maintain smaller class sizes so that we can address these challenges that we see in the classrooms.
Okay, my turn. So to piggyback Heidi's request, we are also going to request that the following positions be brought back to Westford. About a year ago or two years ago, we cut our teaching assistants for our grade K to two. And we, as an association, we have talked to the K to two teachers and it's very evident that the students that they are seeing this year in the kindergarten were not able to attend, you know, their preschool program. So if guided groups, guided groups are just when the classroom teacher divides their students up into smaller groups so that students can receive more attention. If, if we are really going to teach guided groups in the K to two schools, it would be very beneficial to bring back these teacher assistants because it, it's quite challenging to have a little five-year-old working independently for more than five minutes at a time. And if there was ever a year to bring back pre first, and I can say this as a parent of a child who attended Westford's pre first, and when it was first mentioned to my husband and I, it was simply called the gift of time, right? Because we know not all children progress at the same speed and in the same direction. So I have a feeling if a pre first program were to be offered next year, unlike a handful of years ago, when there weren't too many families that were taking this opportunity for their child, I have a feeling it would be just the opposite this year. Because I can't think of too many families that would say their child didn't miss out on something. And I, I honestly believe many families would want their child to attend a pre first for many reasons, but I think now is the time to bring that back. We have our digital learning specialist. So those positions were cut from K to eight schools and we do have amazing digital learning specialists at Westford Academy. However, they are spread very thin. And if we are in a digital world, it only makes sense to have digital learning specialists for each of our grade levels. And another area where, gosh, we used to have this, I want to say like 20 years ago when I first started, we would have team leaders. And that was really beneficial so that administration in each of the buildings could speak to a team leader. This person would then relay anything important. And it was just, it worked out really well and it was cut, but it's a beneficial position because when those positions were cut, all those duties of the lead teacher just fell into the laps of all the teachers on the team or in the department and we're, we're already feeling stretched then. And so lastly, we also pulled teachers to say, in addition to positions that you would like to see reinstated in Westford, what positions could we next year or in the future benefit from for our students? So permanent substitutes in each building. We know how challenging it is to have any substitutes this year. And the thought behind having a permanent sub in each building, one, One, um, this individual would be able to build a rapport with the school's routines and how they operate. But would be able to develop relationships with the students. So especially for our students on an IEP. If a teacher assistant had to be out for the day, this um built in permanent sub. Would have already read through all of the legal doc documents, all of the IEPs. And they would already have chances or met this student. So i- it's really um, this need would help many areas um in our schools. We have added school psychologists, but as Heidi mentioned, we are, the need outweighs what we have. And we we know before COVID, if if a parent was looking for a therapist for your child. It was next to impossible. COVID only amplified that i- and i- it is next to impossible to find a therapist. Who has availability, who is close in proximity to where you live. And who your child feels comfortable with. So we would like to see more counselors or behavior specialists in our schools. Our ELL department, they are traveling among three, two to three schools. And so they would love to have some um support teachers for their classes. Some Westford Academy staff said we could really benefit from more social workers. And the last request for next year or the following year would be specifically for Westford Academy. And that would be that we have a separate curriculum coordinator for the science department. And then one for the math department. And trust us, w- w- we know, we know how tight budgets are. We also know that some surrounding towns allocate more money to their public schools. So we we know our town's motto for our public school, shaping the future, one child at a time. We, as a staff, we just want to make sure that our students are receiving the best education they have. It's no surprise that anyone living in Westford, moving to Westford, thinking about moving to Westford. It's it's for the school systems. And your taxes are not cheap. And we know that, and we know that. And we just want to give um the taxpayers the best education that we can provide the students. And so we thank you for your time. Um, Heidi and I, um, we are open to have any conversations. We, I can talk, I can talk a dog off a meat wagon. Um, it it's through conversations that each of us have a better understanding of our schools. Um, and it's through conversation that you you learn, oh, well, maybe I I thought I understood it. But now I have a better understanding. Now I have a clear picture of um, you know, what our students and staff are dealing with. So any school committee member, um, you know where to reach, Heidi and myself. And if you have any questions at all, we would be happy to answer them either um right now, tonight, or um any day in the future. So thank you. We we thank you for your time.
Well, thank you, Christine. Thank you, Heidi, for coming out tonight. I I am going to open up to the committee for any questions or comments. I I'll just say, you know, thanks not just for coming out, but thanks for what you do for our students every day. Thank you both for your uh your dedication to the district for all of these years. That's, you know, it's remarkable and it's appreciated. And lastly, I just, I really appreciate the focus on the most important thing, which is the students. So I think anything we can do, you know, especially in budget, to remind ourselves of why we're doing this. And that is the focus on what the students need. Um, and so anything we can do to to hone our attention on that is, I think, is a good thing and helpful. And I know, and I know you guys have an appreciation for the budget challenges that that we face year in and year out. And so um I think just, yeah, keeping the conversation open about what sorts of trade offs we might have to make. Um, is really helpful as well.
Yep, absolutely. So we welcome um any emails, any phone calls. Um, Heidi and I, we are always available after we teach our students.
Uh, committee, did you guys have comments, questions? Sean.
Hey, hi, Christine. Hi, Heidi. Thanks for being here. Um, greatly appreciate everything that you do for our students. Um, real quick, I I know you didn't touch on this, Christine, but have have there been any surveys or anecdotal feedback? As to kind of like teacher satisfaction, overall wellness, um, things like that? Because I I remember the last time that you reported to us, um, you know, or or maybe it wasn't you. But it a few years ago, you know, the the concerns about COVID were uh that there wasn't a good balance, right? Between the the work and life balance, particularly when we were all remote.
So to answer your question, no, we have not surveyed our staff um in regards to job satisfaction recently. Um, I don't want to speak for every member, um, but I think everyone would feel completely exhausted. I will admit, I was naive in thinking that this year would be easier. I thought, okay, if if we survived last year and we got through the challenges, oh, this year will be so much easier. I I think as a staff, we would be divided. Some absolutely feel last year was more challenging. As a fourth grade classroom teacher, I feel like things are much more challenging. Um, because our students are in front of us. And unfortunately, we're seeing the effects COVID has had on them. So um a- and we also know that there's a substitute shortage. And we are trying our very best um not to be out. Because we know that, you know, nothing can replace um their classroom teacher. But I could absolutely um absolutely poll. Um, we could have a conversation of what school committee um would would like to hear. Um, but I would almost unanimously say as a staff. We're tired, we're really exhausted. Our school nurses um this year, they are feeling a very heavy burden this year. Um, I know Charlie Baker, he um made an announcement today um about COVID protocols changing. Um, but they are feeling a very heavy burden with the contract tracing. And and they've they've been amazing about it. They've been working late nights over the weekends. And unlike unlike classroom teachers where we can decide when we want to work over the weekend. Um, our school nurses felt it was just so important um to keep the students and the staff as healthy as possible. Hence hence they put in the extra hours to make sure someone positive wasn't walking back into our schools. So Sean, wa- is that an okay answer? Heidi, do you want to um speak?
Yeah, I would just add one thing, and you know, I'm I'm speaking more to the secondary level because that's where I work. So that's where more of my conversations happen. But I I would assume this is, you know, similar at the elementary level. Um, I know our teachers, um, they've had to do a lot of shifting throughout the year. Because, you know, li- like Christine, I was like, yay, back to normal. This is going to be great, and it is great. And nothing replaces seeing my students in person. That piece has been wonderful. But I will say, you know, our classroom teachers, you know, they recognize that they have to adjust their pacing. They have to, you know, I've had, we've had math teachers who have decided they need to go back and reteach skills and content. But at the same time, um, you know, particularly with things coming up like MCAS, they know they have to cover certain material. So they're kind of between a rock and a hard place, you know? And they've really gone above and beyond and put in a lot of extra hours. Constantly revisiting and revising, you know, their lessons and their help to students. And, you know, I I just don't want that piece to go unnoticed. They've done a tremendous amount of work.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the committee? Yes?
Um, I was just wondering, the survey results you guys were kind of talking about, is that available somewhere? Could it, could you make it available? Just you kind of listed off a number of um things that staff felt they were seeing in the class. In in terms of students' social, emotional well being. I'd I'd love to see if we could get that somewhere.
So um I know Heidi, um, she had Nina upload that um this past Friday. So um i- it should be there, Catherine, and if you can't see it, um, we'd be happy to email um all of you, absolutely. Because i- it is, it's a lot of information. Um, so to look at it um at another time, I I know would probably be very helpful.
You're asking for the survey.
It's getting added to the packet, correct? Yes, it will be, it's not in, it's not in the right, right, yeah, but it's being added, so it will be in this packet. Thank you.
Awesome. Perfect. Thank you, Catherine.
Is it the survey as well or just the? I think it's just the, I think it's just the the memo that you, so the things that you listed?
Yeah.
Yeah, they'll have that list, but Catherine, are you asking to see this, or is that all you're asking?
Oh, no, because I mean, I don't know if that, if we're privy to that information. But it's just more a a synopsis of essentially what they gave us tonight.
The survey data as well, let us know. We'd be happy to take a look at that um as well.
And I can also um email you what the survey questions were.
Awesome.
I can absolutely do that.
Thank you.
That would be good.
Yeah, you're very welcome.
Okay, any other questions? Oh, yeah, Valerie's got something.
Hi, thanks. Um, I had a question about in in this process or in any of the conversations. Have, has there been um any like staff led reflections on the budget changes from last year? Um, I know we added several positions, um, mostly in the special education um. Positions and then the merge of the assistant principal and student support leaders. So I was just wondering if as an association, as you talk about the um information you shared tonight. If there's also kind of a reflection on last year's budget.
That's a really good question, Valerie. And to answer your question, no, we haven't, um, we, that has not been brought up. We have monthly meetings with each of our building reps. And that has not come up. Um, but we can absolutely add that um topic to our February meeting. Um, because, yeah, that was a dramatic change. Um, and now we we don't share um assistant principals. So we'd be happy to get back to you about that topic.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome, Valerie.
Okay. Well, thanks again for joining us tonight. Really appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Yep, I know we'll be talking, talking more.
Okay, take care. Thank you.
Thanks, good night. I'll send them back so they don't have to sit with us anymore. Oops. Okay. Let's go on to our eight oh five item, which is the continuation of our budget discussion.
So um, we don't have an additional presentation, right? Uh, so we, I'm curious, first of all, to see if there's been, if you've received feedback um since the presentation. That would be helpful for us to hear as well, too. We have a meeting scheduled this week, a joint chairs meeting um with town manager. Um, and the director of finance, as well as the um the chairs of the select board, school committee and the finance committee. And so I feel like after that meeting, we're going to have a a little bit more information as well, too. So we're looking, when I have more information about the the potential change in the town allocation. Then we'll be able to have a more specific conversation. So there, so I don't have that specific information. I do know that um in my presentation, I had listed um the deliberations when we talked about the, you know, the the potential timeline. We talked about deliberating tonight, and I put um slash public hearing as well, too. We kind of did, we did more research as to that public hearing aspect of of this process. And that is supposed to take place after um you've made a vote and before it goes then to town meeting. So that that is something that will take place later, and that's posted, and it's in the newspaper, and um all of that uh takes place later. And so I thought it was, I thought it needed to take place in this process before you vote. But it's actually after you vote and before it goes to the town. So just some clarification there. Pat.
I just want to clarify, the one and only question I was asked tonight I got wrong. The fourteen and a quarter is included in the FY twenty three.
Thanks, Pat. So just so for people can hear that at home, during the um minimum wage discussion at the beginning of the meeting, the question was. Is the increase to fourteen and a quarter minimum wage, fourteen dollars and twenty five cents factored into the FY twenty three budget? Um, that's been presented, and the answer to that is yes, it is factored in. We thought previously that maybe it was not, but it is in fact factored in.
I really thought that you had already said that in the past, Pat, but when you said not necessarily, I was like, you know what? I'm not, wasn't going to second guess you on that one at this moment, so I'm glad that, I'm glad that it is. Because I thought, I think it was.
And that's good news.
No, it's great, great.
Thank you, Pat.
Thanks, Ed.
So um, I I have one question about the budget timeline, because originally we had said to vote the end of month. Is that still happening? Because I I need a little bit more understanding about where the timeline is.
So I I do not anticipate at this moment in time that you would be voting at our next meeting, which is what the timeline originally said. I think I'll have a more accurate either information in in terms of the town appropriation for our next meeting. Or at least an understanding as to when we might know that information as well, too. I know that the town manager is scheduled to make her budget presentation on February eighth. So I feel like it's going to be in that, the window where we're approaching that. Or or would be just after that as well, too, when that's been public knowledge. So um, so I I do think that that we do, we should not be anticipating a vote um in the next couple of meetings.
Okay. Yeah. And we're comfortable with that, as far as timeline.
Yeah, yeah, we still, we have a lot, yeah, because we really need to have the vote before the meeting with the select board and the FinCom, which is scheduled for March tenth. So it really gives us, it really gives us a significant amount of time for us to continue to deliberate and discuss.
Thank you, Valerie and Catherine.
Oh, um, I lost my head, I thought. Um, when you were talking about the budget hearing, I mean, um, sorry, public hearing. I know that's typically, at least, I only have one year to draw on, but it's kind of been a formality, right? Like, it's not really when we get public comment. It's kind of, you open and shut it for um legal reasons, I guess. Um, but what I was thinking about was, as this is kind of um looking like more of a February. Um, we would have some more details. Um, and also that's kind of when we told the public to tune back in for like a FDK check in, sort of. I just wanted to get, to kind of plant the idea of potentially um a non-business meeting for like a budget forum. Um, budget slash FDK community conversation, whatever you want to call it. Um, where we had kind of have more of a dialogue, more of a Q and A. Sort of the relaxed public comment protocols. And maybe that would be better after um we kind of have that, those details finalized. And that those way, the way to make up that gap um shared. So I'm, it's just a suggestion. Um, I think it should be part of the conversation.
I'm going to kind of jump on what Valerie was saying, because actually that's kind of based on some feedback I've kind of gotten. That I think people are looking for more detail. And and I kind of felt my, you know, the same myself. So I'm kind of curious as to, A, I think it's a great idea, Valerie, what you're suggesting. And B, I'm curious as to when we get more detail, because I'm quite conscious that as we were talking about the highlights. There, you know, um, two weeks, or the last meeting, when was it last week? I can't even remember at this point. Um, you know, some numbers were still being changed. We were having a conversation, but this number might change. And then another topic, and this number might change, or we kind of needed to see where, what's going to happen with the busing contract and stuff like this. So um, I'll be honest, I I feel like I need a lot more information and kind of a little bit more definitive numbers. And in terms of progressing forward with this and coming up with some more questions. And and I do know, we've definitely, I've definitely had parents reach out to me in relation to understanding the budget and understanding full day kindergarten. So um, when can we have some more information? Or do we get more information? Exactly.
Because we know that that it is continuing to evolve.
Yeah.
But I'll, I mean, if you want to answer that.
I I mean, I I will say, the the number that I said we're looking at that would potentially be changing. I, I mean, I, I will say, the, the number that I said we're looking at that would potentially be changing is that difference. So that seven hundred and five thousand dollar difference between what our need is and then what the town allocation is. There's not like multiple pockets of places where there's going to be a change, because it's, it is based on the, the budget of, of what we are projecting our, our need, knowing that we also have ten out of eleven contracts that need to be negotiated, and this is the end of the bus contract, right? So I just don't want people to have the wrong idea, thinking that, oh, there's just a whole bunch of other places where savings could, could find themselves. It's actually, there's other places where initial cost, like additional costs could end up appearing. It's not a question of, oh, they might find some money someplace, because that's not the case. It's, it's, we've budgeted something, we're, 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 we're actually being conservative, and we might actually find ourselves with the costs being higher than that. Would, is that a safe way to, to, to describe that, Pat, would you say?
Yeah, so there's still some unknowns.
The unknowns aren't going to be, but the unknowns aren't going to be less.
Yeah, there's nothing that we're, nothing that we're not saying that we know is definite yet, right? If, if you're presenting it, it's still having a, a level of variability, that's still a question.
So that, and that does lead me to the concern, right? So like when, what, what, what we shared in our proposal was a reduction of eight positions, which reduced our budget by five hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. And so I, I appreciate everything that, um, that WA mentioned and, and talked about, but for us to not consider that increases our number by five hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, the number that we're already at, which then puts us at, that is, that would be, you know, one point two million dollar, um, difference than, than the town allocation. So that's, that's just something that I'm very concerned about.
So can I, can I clarify this?
Sure.
The, the number we initially were presented with, I can't even remember, was it seven oh nine, or I, I can't remember the specific.
Seven hundred and five thousand.
That right now is a shortfall, but like you were saying, there are costs we don't know yet, and that they may increase. So that seven hundred has the potential to increase?
I am, I believe that we're going to be looking at ways to decrease that seven hundred and five thousand dollars. The difference is, is that like when we talk about the bus contract, right? I don't, our bus contract isn't going to be less than what we already know it is, right? So is it possible that some of that could increase? Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yeah.
When is the kind of timeline then on getting that kind of information and getting more kind of a detailed budget, you know, look?
Well, I, I will say much of that is, is negotiations, right? So much of that is negotiation, so only when those, only when those contracts, whether it's with the bus company, whether it's with any of these units, is then, um, presented to you as the school committee to, to, to vote on it, that's, that's when you'll have some of that information. So some, some of that, it's, it will be after you have to vote on the budget.
I also want to mention, with the elephant in the room, we have almost no settled contracts for next year.
We've no which?
We have almost no settled contracts for next year.
Right, that's, I'd mentioned the ten out of eleven.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's a lot of unknowns.
I do, I do think Catherine, I think, I feel like, for you and I, this is the first time we're both sitting in this conversation, right? But based on just even the responses, I, I, I think that's common. That's common, that, because when you, when your, your response to, you're going to find that out after you vote on it, I could see that was, that was, that was surprising, but I feel like that is typical.
Well, here's.
I just wanted to, just so people at home have the same information, what Pat just said. It was just a clarification that in addition to bus contract that, you know, we would be looking to renegotiate, uh, for the next contract, we also have ten out of eleven bargaining units, um, whose contracts are up as well. So just, just reiterating that there are unknowns, but also reiterating that that's not unusual, that, you know, the budget process will be the best, you know, the best information that we have at the time for what next year will look like, and some of those things will come through after, and they will land hopefully very close to what the budget.
And, and can I ask, you know, and this is coming from, I suppose, conversations, you know, that, you, how common is it? And maybe Pat, you know, having been in, in other districts, because I know it's been typical for the previous school committees and, and superintendent administration, um, but does that also have to be the same going forward? Can we tweak or change or improve that somehow to maybe make the budget processing, process, you know, again, more transparent, or open, or better? I, I don't know, and I don't know, is this typical for school budgets, um, that you would vote on it before? As you said, a lot of unknowns at the moment.
Seldom is a contract that's expiring on June thirtieth settled, in my experience. Seldom is a June thirtieth expiring contract settled when the budget has to be voted on.
Okay, okay.
Now, the vulnerability of the quantity of contracts that are outskinned is definitely unusual.
Okay.
The fact that they're not settled is totally normal.
Okay, so it's the number as opposed to the timeline?
In that Catherine, as a response of COVID, a lot of these contracts, we entered into one-year agreements, uh, because we couldn't effectively negotiate because of the pandemic.
Okay.
So they're all falling to this year.
And also to keep in mind, things, I, I'd say the process looks a little different this year than it has maybe in the past few years. I think for some of us, we're, we're used to, it, it, we're, it's a little bit, um, we saw, I think, more detail earlier because of the different timeline this year, and so it makes sense. But I, I don't think it's a bad thing. I think there's a thoughtfulness about how we're doing it. But I know it's also like, we're used to sort of like, I mean, the past few years, it's sort of been like, hey, here are the things we're looking at. Let's, you know, let's take a, let's, let's take a temperature of the Western population on those, and, and we're not doing that yet, because I think right now we're letting the methodical process of our, our trained professionals look at everything. But they, I know they also, as Dr. Chu said at the beginning of this agenda item, want to hear from us. So our job is to give that guidance. So if we know of things that are important, that we think they need to know as far as making trade-offs, making value decisions about what has to be looked at in the budget, then that's our job to communicate those. Likewise, when they hit a point where they're like, we're weighing these things, we need to, we need to take it to the committee, they will. And so, but I, but yeah, I know it, it feels like, okay, more, more.
My husband doesn't budget that way. He would kill me if, if I went out and said, oh yeah, we budgeted this for the car, but I spent double.
Alicia, did you?
No, Sean got what I was, I was going to say about the extensions.
So I, I think that the elephant in the room, right, is the seven hundred and five nine eighty-six. So are we hopeful, all things go well? We're hopeful that we'll have a good update on if that number is still seven hundred and five ninety-eight, uh, nine eighty-six by our next meeting?
I, I was, I mean, in the conversations that I've already had, I'm, I don't want, I'm not going to commit to a specific number from the town manager. But in the conversations that we've had, she was very optimistic that, that that num, that, that they will be able to make an adjustment to decrease that number.
Okay.
Um, I'm not anticipating that that number would increase, I'm anticipating that it would decrease. I just don't know by what amount yet.
Right.
So, but I, but she's given me every reason to believe that there are some possibilities when, when she's seen what we've done in the first place already, what we've been looking at, and then that's going to be part of our, our conversations, is to have a kind of a better understanding as to is there, is there potential room for some, for some movement in that allocation?
Okay.
Yeah.
So there'll definitely be an update at the next meeting.
Right.
We just don't know how.
Yeah, right, 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 right.
I, yeah, I just, I honestly, I, I, I know what her timeline is for her presentation, but I don't know if she would have information for me much before that or not.
Okay, okay, all right.
And, and the busing, is, have we an update on that, or any idea on when we might get an update on what we're doing about the bus contract?
So yes, I've been speaking to D because we can, we're at the period where we're out of the three-year base, I think everybody knows that, and we can have a fourth-year extension, there's a dollar amount in it, but it's not really dollars, because the first, second, third years are what they were in the contract, so we have to do an extended on that dollar amount. I have reached out to D, and, um, they needed to talk amongst themselves, the leadership of that company. And, um, I was hoping to hear from him today, I just put out a little, uh, reminder that we want to talk, because if we're going out for bid, then we gotta go out, I'm ready to go out, we want to go out right away. But first, we want to see if there's room there. I, my understanding is they have an open contract with the district, um, we can extend, whether it's financially the right answer, I don't know.
I think I have to relay that again. So I'm going to summarize, uh, sorry Director of Finance, Pat Linhardt, just updating on the bus contract, that we're in the third year, but there is a, an option to extend to a fourth year, optional year, which may or may not be beneficial, and that initial outreach to DBUS has occurred to start looking at what, you know, an extension or a new contract might look like, and so that process is just underway.
And so that will be brought to the committee, so that you can all determine which of those two routes to take.
Valerie?
Something that I think may, may like reword sort of Catherine's question, or sort of what you were topping, talking about, too, was, so like the seven oh five number, right? We're, we're talking about that, that, that will firm up after joint chairs, and then clearly after, um, the town manager makes her presentation to the select board. But, um, we're pretty sure it's not going to change by seven hundred and five thousand dollars, right? So I guess for the, and I know some of this took, some of this conversation took place at last week's finance, uh, last week's finance subcommittee meeting. So maybe just for the public's benefit and for the other committee members, um, who may or may not be new to budget season, maybe you could just talk about that thinking of like why, um, like why aren't potential ideas talked about in a public way before that number is final? Does that make sense?
It does. Um, I'll, I'll say for one reason is that we were, we were trying to be very respectful and, um, cognizant of even talking about the number of staff members that would need to be reduced, and that was based on enrollment, based on being purposeful about knowing that our, our, um, that our enrollment's going down, right? And so that was something that, that already will have an impact, as we heard from WEA tonight as well, too, okay? My concern is to talk about any other possible reductions, not knowing exactly what the number is, is, can be very alarming for, uh, for staff members, and, and, and I think that that's, that's concerning. And so I would not want to just start throwing out suggestions based on different potential numbers, because it can also inadvertently tell, make people think and/or tell people that you don't necessarily value something the same way that you value something else, and I just feel like that would be irresponsible. So I understand people's, um, desire and concern about wanting to know a little bit more information, but that's where I'm like, I, I really want to know exactly what the shortfall is before I then present to you what I think it would be, I think the most responsible way to address it at that time. And so I, I understand why it, it seems to be a little bit of, um, hurry up and wait, you know? But, but there is just a little bit of that right now.
And also strategy, if we had to, um, try to backfill a two hundred thousand dollar gap, that would be a very different scenario than a six hundred thousand dollar gap, which may have to be a more, a larger scale programmatic reduction.
That's a great point.
Yeah.
I think it's more, I understand that, I think, and they all make sense. I think it's interesting that we kind of vote on something that's not necessarily definitive.
You will have the answer about that seven hundred five thousand dollar gap, though, certainly, prior to any vote. The only variables will be those salaries and the bus contract.
And that's always the case, you're always in the last part of a contract, right? I mean, that always has to happen at some point, but yes, it is, it doesn't feel great to, to not know every, every, yeah, every last dollar and every decision.
I think it can be harder to have a discussion maybe when you don't, you know it's an evolving process. I mean, obviously we will be not voting the next meeting, so.
Right.
And I think that speaks to why, like, tonight and last meeting are a little sort of quieter, right? As far as, um, public comment, or as far as our own questions, because it, it's really, I think the meat of what will drive discussion is what's identified in that gap. So that speaks to that.
Chris, Pat has her hand up.
Just one comment to just remind you.
Can you, can you sit here?
I don't know, I was enjoying Chris translating.
Let me start doing it in Spanish, too.
It took me longer to walk up here than my comment. It took me longer to walk up here than my comment, just to remind you that town meeting's part of it later, too.
Yes, that's right.
Right, so that changes the timeline.
Okay.
They, they take me longer to walk up here.
You could say.
We're going to get her a wireless link.
And I think, I just wanted to add, too, that, um, as I was listening to, thank you for sharing the, um, finance subcommittee meeting. But the other things that we could talk about leading up to waiting for those final details are the two positions, or the two adjustments proposed for FY twenty-three in the slides already, which are.
Thank you, we talked about that at the, at the subcommittee.
The increase to substitute pay from eighty to ninety, and whether or not we should move forward with that or hold off. And then the, um, one point oh HR admin assistant that was added with grant funds.
Yeah.
And, and then whether to continue that as well. So those are things, yeah.
So I just wanted to share that I was, um, I listened to a conversation about substitute pay at a different school committee meeting last week, and that ninety-degree range, that, that ninety-dollar range, not ninety-degree, ninety-degree. That ninety-dollar range seems to be pretty much on par with most of the districts, and that same discussion is being had, and it's all in that same sort of, um, dollar frame that we were discussing as well. So I thought that was really interesting to hear that same discussion being had with those same numbers, so.
That's awesome.
Okay, well, that was a good discussion, and we'll talk more on the thirty-first, and, and we will add, we'll talk about, you know, what other, if we need to add meetings outside, whether they be more traditional or more budget forum type things, we can do that.
I, I mean, in, in talking about that, too, I, I do wonder, because I think the meetings with the subcommittee has been so helpful, just even little things like that, Valerie remembering a conversation that, that took place, that if, if you were to have a, a, a public discussion, does it make sense if, if, if the subcommittee is hosting that? You know what I'm saying? As opposed to like the full committee meeting versus, I don't know. I'm just curious as to, there might, again, there might be some, I think, some really valuable ways for us to really, I think, use that opportunity.
I, I'm open to whichever, whatever sort of hosting, um, protocol we decide, but I, I mean, we've been holding those in the afternoon, right? So I think this would need to be more flexible for parents. And it could be virtual, right? I mean, we have not sustained audience, in-person audience members since September, so, um, you know, maybe even like a later time.
You know, we've resorted to piping in crowd noise.
Yeah, I think virtual and, you know, later for, for families to be able to tune in, have that flexibility is, um, would be the way to go.
Okay, anything else before we move on? Okay, very good, thank you. And let's do the COVID update, last item on the agenda.
So, um, the, the big news is the announcement from today, right? So that's, that's in the packet as well, too. I included the actual announcement from, um, from DESI about a shift, a, a potential shift in the testing program. So I want to kind of break that down for you. So what, what they shared with us today is the option for schools to know, who are using test and stay, as we are, to no longer use test and stay if we were to transition to either symptomatic testing or pooled testing. And in doing that, we also would no longer be, uh.
Contact tracing?
Contact tracing, I was trying to think of like the word, to do contact tracing, right? But the actual contact tracing as well, too. So that would be, that would be an enormous sort of shift for the expectations on a daily basis for our, our school nurses. Who, as you heard Christine just talk about, that they, I mean, they've been doing an amazing job throughout this whole process. throughout this whole process. And if, right now, with the change throughout the state, that is one of the things that they are allowing us to then say, if we were, if we were to do one of these other two things, we could pause contact tracing. And really focus the efforts on trying to support, you know, symptomatic individuals. And then, hold that thought, Catherine. The, in addition to that, we would have access to at-home rapid tests for all staff and students who wanted to participate. So we would no longer be using test and stay as a requirement to be in school if they had been identified in some way, right? As a, as a close contact, as we were doing. But we would now have this additional resource where staff and students who wanted to participate in that process would be able to have access to rapid tests. So we would be, they would send them to us. There's an opt-in process to that. And so we're, it, they're going to have more information tomorrow for that, what that looks like, because the logistics are also changing quite a bit. My recommendation is that, is that we move in that direction. I want to work closely with our, with our district coordinator that we have as well as the nurses in all the buildings to, to kind of look to see shifting some of this, some of these, even just the supplies would, what, what that would look like. So we really have to look and see how we can best use, utilize the resources that we have. And then I'll communicate all of that to the families as to what, what we'll do. But my recommendation is that we no longer continue test and stay and we no longer will be doing the contact tracing. We did change last week to have the daily update of the, of the positive case counts in each school. So parents are able to, families, they're able to access that information on a daily basis. But that's kind of a big, that's a big shift right now that was, that was shared with us this morning. Catherine, you had a question?
I, I watched the, the conference Baker gave and he, I kind of, I had taken from it that we had, if we did, if we wanted to move away from that contact tracing and the test and stay, that yes, we would do either the symptomatic or pooled testing, plus we would also have to do those at-home test kits. Is your, and I, obviously it was just a conference, so they didn't get into the details. Is that, if we were to do that, like move away, you know, shift how we're doing it, does that require, like, all families within the district to kind of opt in for this at-home test thing? Because it's only one a week, I think he was suggesting, per student and per staff member, so.
It's, it's the, I believe the expectation is that we would then be participating and providing that opportunity. But it is not something that then it would be mandatory for everybody to participate in. So they are, you know, they're changing the rules in the middle of, of this process quite a bit, right? But it, we do have to be, we do have to be doing symptomatic or pooled testing. Don't have to be doing both. We have to be doing one or the other. And the aspect of the at-home tests is that we would then be, that would be, that would be something that we would then be engaging in to provide to our families and students. But we don't have to have a certain percentage of people participate in order to do that, like they were with them, you know, to go across, you know, to, to remove the masks. We had to hit a specific threshold. There's no, there are no numbers associated to it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, it does, yeah.
And tomorrow at 1:00, there's a webinar for us to get into all of the detail with the commissioner. So we'll have more information.
So it sounds like DESI would be providing one test a week for every staff and student, for every staff member and student, like, so that, all throughout a day. Wednesday, you could pick up your test every week. So I would say, I'm, I'm concerned about getting rid of the, the contact tracing because I know there's a lot of families who have at-risk family members who for them, their kids being exposed is a serious concern. I think I personally would rather see us do pooled testing if we're going to get rid of contact tracing. But I'm wondering about the availability for the at-home test. Is it going to be reliable once a week? So that if a family felt like they wanted to DIY pool test and test their kids once a week to make sure they weren't getting exposed, is DESI going to be providing us with, you know, 5,000 tests once a week?
So that's, I think that's still a, a good question, right? So what I read and what I heard was that people who want to participate. So I am not under the impression that DESI is going to look at our student number and our faculty number and just put aside that many tests for us. I believe that it's going to be an opt-in scenario in which case people who choose to participate, we will be sent enough tests for the people who are choosing to participate. Because if they choose to participate, the idea is that we're entering into a, you know, an understanding that I'm giving you this test with the expectation that you as the staff member or you as the student are going to take it this week and we'll have like an organized way to say, can you please report any, if you, if it's a positive test, report it to us.
Right.
So it's sort of this partnership in a way that it would allow people to do exactly what you just said, right? So if there was a family that, or, you know, who, who wanted to do it. And I feel like the shift is going from the, the expectation that the schools are able to really know exactly where everybody has been in terms of the contact tracing, to providing resources so that there's, there's peace of mind within the families.
So I think it's that peace of mind that I want to make sure we get clarification on. Because as anyone in this room knows, the second CVS or Walgreens get tests, it goes up online. I've done it myself and I've said Walgreens has tests right now. And people flock there and they grab them. That's not, that's not a viable option for a lot of our families. Not only is it, is it expensive, but if you miss the post on Facebook that says CVS has tests, you don't get tests. So I think if we're going to be moving away from contact tracing, the peace of mind of knowing that you can test your kid once a week, if you opt into it, I think would be extremely helpful. So just getting clarification on that, I think, would be helpful for a lot of our families.
And additionally, we, we received information from the Health Department today that Westford is, not, the, our, Ray Dick, the, the Health Director, shared information about ways for, for families and for staff and employees to access tests on their own as well too, right? Because I think what we're seeing is because it was so difficult to get them in stores, I feel like they've, they've been, you know, a large number have been purchased by different government groups that are then distributing those. And DESI is one of those groups that purchased a lot of these tests to then be distributing them en masse.
I believe the federal government has made, was it four tests available?
Four tests per household. And it went live today.
The postal service, so yeah, the website's up.
Right.
Is it per month?
Is it per month?
I saw it is like eight per month.
I, I just heard four and that's all, that's as far as I got, was the headline. That said four. In fact, my wife already, she sent me an email, like, already ordered hers. I'm like, okay.
Me too. Can I ask on terms of then coming back to the pool testing and symptomatic testing? Because we've never really discussed this. You know, in recent weeks or months, as our test and say program got up and running, have we had any conversations in regards to those two options or, you know? One of the things that kind of initially jumps out to me with something like the pool testing, considering the numbers we've had in recent weeks, is that I believe, and forgive me if I'm wrong, that sometimes people who have had COVID can test positive for nearly up to three months. So I'm just kind of wondering, have we had any?
They still didn't want vaccinated individuals participating in, in the pool testing. That was still something that they were saying. And so we did start talking about it and we talked about it when we came back from the break as well too. And I, I don't think I, I mentioned it last week because I think the conversation was different. But the, the challenge with the, with the pool testing was also that everyone who was participating in pool testing already with their limited number of people who at that point had been, that was participating, they, there was a, there was a delay in both the availability of tests and the turnaround time. So it was, we talked about it and it did not seem to be the time that we would make that shift because it's just even longer for people who are already participating. And you, instead of the, the 48-hour turnaround, and I can't remember if that was the actual number or not, but it was, it was doubling the time, which then is somebody, it wasn't, somebody who was participating, they could be in school longer and then only get the result, you know, after they've been in school for a couple of days, which just didn't seem to be the best use of our energy. So we started talking about, okay, well, what would it look like if we were able to start looking at symptomatic testing? And then we were also trying to figure out because the, because of the change in, with the Omicron variant being just so much more highly contagious, the idea of the, the ability to, we were talking about shifting from identifying individual students, but we were talking about notifying an entire classroom, right? So kind of expanding that understanding. But, and then this came out today, right? So my, my original conversation tonight was going to be more about, okay, this, last week, we talked about the, the dashboard. This is the direction that we're looking at to make this, this kind of change in, in notifying families and how we would do that. And now it's more like, well, we actually should be pausing that and shifting our focus to get access to these rapid at-home tests for families and work towards symptomatic testing in general. So I just don't know exactly what it looks like, but I will communicate that to the families when we get that set up.
I don't know how this would work in, in practice, but is there some sort of like opt-in contact tracing? Where like the family that has a high-risk situation could kind of have an asterisk next to their name or something? I mean, if the school.
I will say, we do, we do have some students who are already, might have specific health plans, right? Based on, on their needs and, and that already exists. And, and that would continue, right? I, I don't know if it would be possible to extend that beyond somebody who, a student who had a very specific health plan. So I don't think that that necessarily helps for family members who might have compromised members at home, but it's not the student. I don't know if, if we would be able to accommodate that in the same way. But I do think that we're going to continue to look and see what, what can we do with these options with the new program.
Sorry, just one other thought I had as I'm looking through this memo from DESI is that it seems like, not surprisingly, it's kind of like a rock and a hard place because they mentioned in a few places that if you opt in by January 21st, which is Friday, that you get prioritized. And seeing as how the fall went, I'm wondering if we want to try to get that priority status, but we have so, still so many unknown.
So I'm glad you mentioned that because we did opt in with what, we said that we were going to participate in test and stay right away too, right? And that took clearly forever.
Right, right.
The difference here is that we're not relying on a new person, right? So what really, what really complicated things for us with test and stay was that they were providing staff to do things that they just didn't provide until after we hired our director for the district. And then, then CIC Health did provide a couple of people to, to help that process. My intention is to submit, because this is not for, this is, this survey that needs to be done by the 21st was not specifically for every staff member or every family that would want to do it. That's more, at least the way I read it, was that that was more for me and for the district to, to express our interest in participating to get, so that we are on their radar.
It does look like by Friday, you need to know how many staff. And then you get a week to figure out how many families.
Right. But that's where I don't know if, that's my point, we're going to find out tomorrow if.
So I.
How many family, like, because I can tell them how many staff members we have, right?
My, the, the question I was getting to was, are, are you looking for a vote? Because if it, if it is that priority vote by the, if it is that priority status by the January 21st, we don't meet again until the 31st.
That's right.
So I was kind of curious what your thought was. Are, are you planning to make a decision on your own or?
So if we go through the process that we set up, this is shifting the testing to different testing, but it's still testing. So I wouldn't necessarily, if you, if you wanted to, to, to vote to support that change, if you, if we can talk about that, I feel like that isn't necessary. But I feel, because I'm not, it's not a, it's not a, it's not a, it's not that type of a change. It's not going from no testing or pulling out of the state program or making a decision about masks that is different than DESI guidance. This is still following the, the DESI guidance and their recommendation. They, they're, they prefer that districts do this.
And, and you may disagree with this characterization, but it doesn't feel like it's also a blanket thing that's impacting every student without them having a say, right? There's, there's opt-in opportunities, opt-out opportunities and things like that. So I, I feel, I feel comfortable folding it into.
And I, and I would support anything that gives you any, the nimbleness. Is that a, is that a noun? Like, you know, to be able to, like, listen to the webinar tomorrow, make a decision.
Right.
And it does, it sounds like we don't really have to stop contact tracing and test and say until we have tests. So we do have a little bit of time to get some details. Maybe by the 31st, we'd have some more. Because otherwise, we're, we may have some panicked families hearing tonight and thinking that something's going to start happening. But it does look like there's a couple of week, weeks for this to, two weeks or so for this to really play out.
Right, except I, I, I do recommend that we stop test and stay. I recommend that we, because I, I think I need, I need that individual's focus to go from, from that program to then getting this up and running, to the, to then shifting this. So I, I do think that we should be stopping that and then moving forward with this.
So I wonder then if you could let parents know when you think that stoppage would happen? Because my thought was, we don't necessarily need to revote on it because the policy says we authorize you to make adjustments as needed along with the DESI guidelines. And this is a new DESI guideline. So I don't think we need a vote. I think the policy says that you are authorized as per DESI guideline. But I do think parents are going to want to know, is, like, is there going to be a week where no testing is happening and then new testing starts? So I know that the seminar is tomorrow, but if there's, you know, any information that comes out of that, if you could just blast email out, because I guarantee we'll get questions now. Does this mean all testing stops tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM? No. But, you know, letting parents know when it is going to make the shift, I think, will be really helpful.
I will say for anybody listening, the conversations that I had today, because basically because we also had the long weekend, was that my understanding is that there weren't any students that were identified and communicated today that they would need to be participating in test and stay. And so there were some students who participated in test and stay today, but that was their last day of test and stay. So I do not anticipate that anybody should be needing the test and stay program in the morning, which is also part of my rationale for saying, I think this is then the time to kind of move towards this additional focus. And I, I think as, as, you know, as swiftly as they can get the, the resources to us. We have, that being said, the resources that they're talking about sending to us are the additional rapid at-home tests. We have our tests that we are using for test and stay, which would be what we would be transitioning to the symptomatic testing.
Would the symptomatic testing, I mean, and obviously you've had, you need to have more discussion on this. Are you seeing that as still running similarly out of here? Or that it kind of shifts to the school, that the school nurses can, as needed? You know, a kid develops a fever during the middle of the day or something, that they can do that there?
I, I, I don't know. We haven't decided all of the logistics, but I do believe it would be school-based. It wouldn't make sense for it to be, because the point would be if someone tested negative, they would be able to stay in school.
Anybody with a symptom coming to school who would then go to the central office shouldn't send their child because they already have the symptom.
Yeah.
Right, right. But we just have to figure out, is that something that, that CIC can support with? So we can have people going to different schools at different times so that it's not just the ability of the, of the nurse to be doing that? The nurse would clearly be able to do that as well. But if we had the ability to kind of provide some of those additional resources, that I think would be helpful.
Well, with eliminating contact tracing eventually, you would, I would imagine it frees up a lot of time. Because the. frees up a lot of time, because the contact tracing seems to be causing the time issue as opposed to the actual testing.
It does, but I want to stress that the things that they weren't able to do were the things that they, that are part of their regular job.
Okay.
Right? So, that's why I don't necessarily want to replace it. If, with, with us, as we stop doing contact tracing, they're, then they can be even more responsive to, I think, all of the different typical student needs in the school, and the things that they're doing on a regular basis in terms of supporting the students who have regular medication and different things like that.
And particularly with Omicron, the nurses have acknowledged the fact that traditional contact tracing doesn't necessarily apply, because all of the test and stay tests that we're administering, which then are related to close contacts per the original definition, aren't showing up as positives. Meanwhile, there's positives popping up everywhere, so, it, it, we sort of grew, or COVID grew out of what was
Yeah.
The protocol originally.
It's still probably, would, would it be prevalent for unvaccinated students? Because that was kind of originally as well, the point of it, for students who weren't vaccinated.
Which?
The test, the test and stay. So, the idea behind it was, in terms of quarantining or whatever, and, and if you were vaccinated, you didn't have to do the test and stay.
But symptomatic, symptomatic is for everyone, correct?
Right.
Symptomatic is for everyone.
Right.
And then your home test is for everyone as well.
Yep.
So, then with it, to follow that point more, unvaccinated positive cases, I'm sorry, unvaccinated, wait, so, nobody's missing school because you're not identified as a close contact?
Correct.
Okay. I, I had a different question, but I just wanted, it sounds like you've decided that pooled testing is off the table? Is that correct?
I, I think, based on the conversations that we've had, in, in looking at this new information, before this information came out specifically, we were, we were thinking that at this moment in time, pooled testing doesn't make sense. Didn't mean that we weren't gonna consider it again later on, but right now, it didn't make sense based on the, based on the, the resources, based on the problems that the labs were having, and, and all of those different pieces to it. So, then, when this information came out this morning, that said we have to do one or the other in order to participate in this, that's when we started talking about, okay, well, the first thought was transition to the symptomatic testing, but then there were questions about, okay, well, would it make sense to transition to the, to the pooled testing? And I think, based on those conversations, again, those were limited conversations that we were just able to have today. We were saying that the symptomatic testing makes more sense.
Any last questions? Well, things continue to evolve, and
Correct.
We'll see what you learn tomorrow, but this is
2022.
I feel like we need, like, having two meetings two weeks in a row, like, on one hand, you don't want to keep up that schedule, but on the other hand, I feel like the 31st feels so far away, given all the things that are happening, whether it be COVID, or whether it be budget, or whatever, it's like, that's a long time. It's only 13 days, though, it's one day less than normal, so, it'll be here before we know. All right, fantastic. Valerie, would you like to make a motion?
I would. A motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss a strategy with respect to units A, B, C, E, and A, what?
Ask me?
Ask me. Collective bargaining, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position, the committee will not return to public session.
G is not listed in there, and it should, should be. I don't want
Oh.
Because we, that's one of the things that we need to talk about.
Friendly amendment, add G.
Yes. I think with all the other letters in the, we're like, wait a second.
Today's executive session has been brought to you by the letters, G, basically. All right, so, motion?
I'll second it.
Alicia seconded, it's a roll call vote. Catherine?
Aye.
Ming-Chen?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
Aye. Sean?
Aye.
Gloria?
Aye.